No video, Jason.
All right, it is five thirty, I'm gonna call the workshop. We'll start off with presentations when we go somewhere where there is a change tonight. Do we have scheduling because landlord isn't available, so we're gonna take up those budgets tomorrow. They start off with the cemetery association if we can, and then we'll move into community services and the police department followed by person culture and adversity. So. So, we're doing one of us. Oh boy. You're like, this is where you get grilled. Sorry, I didn't hear you say that. Was that a grocery joke? Wait, wait. Hi, I'm Bob from ISIS. I mean, I'm Bob from East Windsor Cemetery Association, sorry. What are you guys doing tonight? Do you have a hobby? Yes. Okay, I did bring some.
What do you think?
I'll take a hard one if you have it. May I have? Would anyone else like one? Yeah, I was saying. That's.
Part of activities and fees in the general government.
Thank you. For that, oh, okay, Kevin, on the page. Got it, okay, thank you, yeah, so this year. Same format budget as last year, so hopefully some of you are familiar with it. Requesting this year fifty thousand, and last year our request was forty thousand. Essentially, you know, the big expenses for us, forty-six thousand in lawn care, that's. That's basically mowing the grass. Snow plowing, twelve thousand, and then tree work, twelve thousand. Usually the tree work is what suffers for us when. You know, we don't get budgeted every request, and we're getting to the point now where there's some safety concerns in some of the cemeteries. We actually had a few people contest, contact us recently, and we had to do a little bit of tree work already this year. And then. Malt and flowers, which is a small number, and pavement repair, ten thousand. We always put in an over for fence. There are some things that we can do year to year, and sometimes we end up with issues in branch and trees like. Like that, that fall on the fence, that need to be repaired, so. Pretty straightforward again this year. You guys have any questions or comments?
No.
Questions on burials, please?
Really good grilled.
All right. More like hard, hard. Yeah. My work day went like this, that'd be great. Monica. That thing.
I'm sure they have a lot of questions for me.
Just wanted to know.
Good evening, I do have a PowerPoint this evening, so Jason could just access that for me. What are we doing first? So if we wanna go in order of the, no, that's not it.
Where would it be?
Probably at the bottom. It's just a file. If you go to data five, it'll bring it to the top. Yeah. And start with senior service, but I think it's the first year. Thank you.
So, hang on, I gotta.
Can I have the back, sir?
Uh, yeah, just a minute. But I'm gonna start the presentation.
Okay.
You're gonna need to go back to Zoom. So, I'm gonna, can I drive again? So.
Oh.
Have you seen that?
Sure.
I want to keep on that, thanks you.
Add that to my budget.
Don't worry about it, it's over here. Just stay behind her, yeah.
I believe it's a ten. Very good. All right, so. This would be good to advance. So, yes, so good evening, today I'm going to present the three budgets that I am in charge or tasked with administering. That would be senior services, social services, and parks and recreation. The first one I'll start with is East Windsor Senior Services. And at the senior center, we are responsible for daily visits and the emotional, social, and health needs of the seniors of East Windsor, as well as other seniors from other towns that come and visit our center. We don't have a residency policy, so all are welcome. As you can see from the photos, we offer a wide variety of different activities. We have a pretty extensive re-bowling program, we brought back our food for thought program, and our cribbage program has gone from just two people, one being a staff, to eleven in a month. Which, in the grand scheme of things, is quite large for a cribbage program, so we're very excited about that. We also have other programs to address senior wellness, weekly exercises classes, yoga, foot care. And unique to East Windsor, we have a choices counselor on staff who is able to provide in-person Medicare assistance, and this is a great asset to East Windsor because navigating the Medicare system, if you haven't done it, is very strenuous. Our transportation program, we did receive a fifty-three-ten grant, but due to supply chain issues, that is. Stuck somewhere. So we are unfortunately not receiving that and are looking for alternative funding options to purchase one in the meantime. Because one of our buses is nearing its end life. Faster than we anticipated not having it. We were victim to catalytic converters being cut out on all three of our buses, so just a thank you to the warehouse point five district for allowing us to use their rehab bus to keep all of our appointments, we did not miss one due to that happening, so again, a community cooperation definitely was very much appreciated. So far this year, we've been able to offer three thousand six hundred and eighty-two round trips. All of last year, we offered five thousand three hundred and four, so we're well on target to surpass that number, which is great because that means that our seniors are comfortable and using our transportation service fully now, as we come out of COVID that much further. These are just a couple of our demographic information in regards to little trips. Like I said, so far we've done three thousand six hundred and eighty-two. Last year, we traveled thirty thousand seven hundred and sixty-three miles. In the previous year during COVID, we only traveled eleven thousand four hundred and twenty-five. Though again, we're on target to surpass those numbers this year. Another big part of the senior center is our nutrition program. We offer an elderly nutrition program in conjunction with the community renewal team or CRT, and the suggested donation is of three dollars for daily lunch. We also have an extensive meals on wheels program, which is for our shut-in residents in East Windsor. We are up to forty-nine clients that received those meals and so far have delivered seven thousand six hundred and forty-four. And that is all a volunteer-based program in regards to those who deliver those meals to the people that are shut in their homes. We honored our volunteers last year in April, and we plan to do the same this year. For congregant meals, which are the meals that we host in-house, we're averaging about twenty-three people a day just for meals. That doesn't mean that they're not staying for other things as well, but for meals, we're averaging about twenty-three people. We had a hundred and thirty-five active members last year consume five thousand eight hundred and seventy-nine congregant meals at the senior center. So, onto the numbers for this year. In regards to salary, the clerical contract is still outstanding, so there has been not, no change to the. Full-time aspect of things, with the exception of, we would like to convert the part-time nutrition manager to full-time. And then we had a vacancy in our admin position, so we'd like to eliminate that position in order to make that full-time position cool. So that would be a difference, a differential of three thousand twenty-six dollars with the salary change. And then we did have a retirement, as many of you know, Teresa Hill retired after twenty-year service here in East Windsor, and so the longevity was decreased by a thousand dollars.
So, you know, with salary change, it's the three thousand twenty-six dollar difference, that's exclusive of the savings and longevity, so it's really two thousand.
It's really two thousand twenty-six, yes.
So, listen, this here is different than what I have here.
Yes.
Are we gonna get an update of that?
You have the update in the, like, cell sheet.
The middle column on there, her twenty-three, twenty-four ask, should match her sheet.
And it does.
The one to the right is Jay's change for the position change.
Yeah, so the middle column on all of these are what I asked for, or my asks to, and then after my one-on-ones with Jason and Amy, there was a couple of weeks. So that would be the right-hand column.
So mine is blank for first sort.
We're gonna talk about that later. That has to do, but we'll talk about that when we get into the workshop part of it after the presentations.
Okay, we just wanted to make sure we presented it.
Okay. Presented separately.
Okay, thank you.
So you're seeing the difference?
It's two thousand twenty-six dollars difference with a retirement of a thousand dollars removed for longevity.
Okay. Okay.
Onto social services, if that's okay. You have to find that piece, or you wanna go back?
Can I ask a question? So, with the supply issues and the grant not coming through and the bus, is there something budgeting in here for that, or?
So those don't come out of my budget, those are in, let's see, in a town, town property or C and R.
Would be in C and R, maybe else, everything is.
Okay, so those that ask don't come from my department, but we are looking at other grant opportunities, and there's some ARBA dollars that have been available on the stage that we might be able to.
Specifically for senior centers.
Okay, yeah. So we are looking for alternative funding source. Good, thank you. On social services, the social services, we do a wide variety, just like at the senior center. We do a thorough needs assessment when a new client comes in to find out what their needs may be for them coming to social services. They could range from anything from energy to nutrition, to rent assistance, energy assistance, and sometimes even just somebody to talk to. So we, the biggest programs that we do currently are energy assistance, sorry, the bar is blocking the title. But for energy assistance, we're responsible for administering that at social services, and thank you, that's the live and program. And in twenty-one, twenty-two, we took in three hundred and ninety applications, that's eighty-five more than the previous year, and we were able to get residents of East Windsor four hundred and twenty-six thousand seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars and fifty-eight cents in energy heating assistance.
So twenty-five percent increase.
So that, we believe, is because they took away the asset test. So, we're not sure if that will be returning, but if it does, I think that number will decrease. I can't go now, did you move the bar?
What? How about that?
There we go. Render to rebate is the second largest program that we do, and that, this is an upcoming program that is run April first to October first, and it covers the previous year's rent program. Last year, we did a hundred and fifty-nine applications and were awarded eighty thousand one hundred and eleven dollars and thirty-one cents. That is funded by OPM, that's the policy and management, which averaged out to be about five hundred and forty-one dollars that they get a check cut to them that they could use at their discretion. We try to encourage them to put it back towards their expenses for good choices, but again, we can't mandate what they use it for. This is evictions, this is part of my, pretty much starting to be everyday life. So we work with the state marshal's office and the movers that they hire through the court system, and what we do is we go, thankfully, with the police department on the day of eviction, we speak with the person if they're there that is being evicted, and then we work to help get them into a more permanent place, give them resources if they're available, and then the town is required, if they leave anything, to take their items for fifteen days. So currently, this is a storage unit that we have at A to Z storage, and as you can see, we have some items that have left from a previous eviction. Another big part of our job in the last two and a half, three years is the relocation act. Under this act, it's a federal act, we are required by law to relocate any resident and/or tenant of East Windsor should their landlord not be able to relocate them or refuses to relocate them. So what we do is, as a town, we put them into a hotel, and then we are mandated to help find them permanent placement. We have to help with storage, we have to help with moving expenses, and then we leave the property of the homeowner or the person that owns that property, in hopes of getting some compensation back. I can tell you that currently, we have five hotel rooms that are at capacity, and their stay has ranged from over a year to six days as of Friday.
And it's more than just needing to relocate people and find them, find them accommodations, it's a like-kind accommodation, which means if you were paying eight hundred bucks for a two-bedroom apartment, you can't find that. And under the federal law, we are stuck providing housing until that like-kind becomes available.
So I'm having a very hard time finding apartments just in general. They, residents now have to help in regards to being willing to move to maybe a more expensive place because they have to show that they are trying to help in this situation, so we've kind of gotten a little bit stricter on being able to do that, but again, it's very difficult to find comparable rents, especially when they're paying for low-market housing in town.
To stay in town?
They don't have to stay in town, I relocated somebody to East Hartford and Bloomfield in two previous.
And where are we collecting these folks, is it like a lead abatement issue, or a?
So this one is a tree that fell on the house.
Okay.
And. The landlord couldn't put them up any longer, so they had to come to the town and ask for relocation. This past one that I had recently is no heat and permanent violate, permit violations of doing work in the home.
If we condemn the place, if we, if we, as the government, identify some place as uninhabitable, it becomes our responsibility. So if there's a fire, if there's utility connection, if there's a tree, you know, roof, and the building official or fire marshal place a condemnation order.
Or the health department.
Health department, it's, it's on us, it's not just, you know, somebody's getting evicted, so now it's, it's our responsibility, it's, we, we caused the, what we were responsible for, the property to no longer be habitable, or considered habitable.
Do you work with a little bit of month section eight if they can't afford to make up the difference?
So we encourage them to go to section eight, which for us is in Windsor Locks, and get their name on the list, but it's about a three-year waitlist.
Housing is a significant crisis in the entire state. Workforce housing, low-income housing, market rate housing, it's a real problem.
Some other activities and functions we're responsible for is nutritional assistance, we work with a five-corner cupboard, we work with the farmer's market coupon program, and then we do also work in conjunction with Parks and Recreation for the Power Park program, which is a weekly backup program where families come and pick up food for the weekend for their children. Some additional programs that we do, we work with the police department for supper cruiser and shop with a cop, we do an expensive backpack program, so every kid that applies gets a backpack full of school supplies, as well as a backpack and a shoe card to get a new pair of shoes to start back to school with. We help with staff enrollment, we work closely with CHR for mental health referrals. And as I said earlier, we are lucky enough to have a choices counselor for Medicare consultation. But again, currently, we have to send them from the social services office on one side of town to this side of town to meet the parent person, which sometimes is, is challenging. These are some of our numbers for social services, the demand for food is starting to increase with the SNAP funding going down, we're coming out of the pandemic, and the five-corner cupboard has seen that increase, and they are now back to their weekly shopping days instead of bi-weekly. At one point, they were seeing sixty families a day. Now that they've gone back to weekly, they're more manageable because they are hurting for volunteers as well. So, we are trying to help them with that and deliver as much as we can to help with the people that are not able to help us at the food pantry. So my budget request, again, for social services is the same clerical contract, that's still out of contract. There is a part-time salary increase that is across the board for permanent part-time staff, and I do have one staff member that receives longevity. So there is, her increases in there. As I alluded to earlier, the federal relocation act requires us to put people up, get their houses placard or condemned, and so my original request is to keep it status quo as per the budget letter that went out. Amy and the first luckman thought we should add something to it since I've already asked for an additional sixty thousand dollars this year. So, four thousand dollars will get me about a week right now, between the five. We have such a generous community that I always like to pay homage to them. This past weekend, we had a very successful Panther Plunge and raised seventeen thousand two hundred and seventy-seven dollars for the field bank, which again goes back to the heating assistance portion where we'll be able to help when their grants run out through CRT, we might be able to buy them a tank of oil or some cocaine or kerosene propellants, depending on how they eat. Again, we work closely with a lot of businesses in town, Problem Sol Brewery, and USA Holling, they're always very generous to us in the holiday season. The Girl Scouts, again, are also one of our biggest supporters, anytime we have a need for anything, they're right on it, they donated coats this year, blessing bags in the past, which are homeless outreach kits with hygiene items in them. And again, our shop with a cop program where we had thirty kids this year, each get about two hundred dollars to shop for, but for their families. And that's social services.
So, what?
Make sure, sorry. I know you have to switch pages, show the last one. It's the very last, parking rack is the last one in that scene exactly behind the libraries. So Parks and Recreation is responsible for administering programs and events for residents and non-residents of East Windsor and surrounding communities. We facilitate these, the top parks and playgrounds with much support from the Department of Public Works. As you can see from the two pictures at the top, these are from our photo contest, it's our second and third place winners. We had them enlarged and blown up and framed in outdoor frames, and they will be. They will be hung on a splashboard fence this year, so we're gonna start doing this as a tradition just to get some faces out there into the community. We search for grants and look for upgrades to our facilities without having to use town dollars, so with that said, we were the beneficiary of eight hundred thousand dollars from the State Bond Commission, which is going towards the lights at Abbey Road and a all-husive playground at East Windsor Park, which are going to be on PCC's agenda in the next couple of days. So, fingers crossed. These are some of our parks and playgrounds, and they are being added to, we actually have to start another page for a couple of parks that are being given to us. From the first segment, so we are adding to our repertoire, I guess we could say, but that's great because we're able to kind of put our own spin on them and make them fun and both passive and active, proactive recreation. So we like to live by the motto of live, work, and play in East Windsor, and how do we make that happen for everybody? The bottom right corner, she was actually our winner of our photo contest. And was very excited to come and pick up her, her prize. Some programs we added last year were ASL courses, we did National Waffle Day in partnership with the senior center, March Madness Bracket Challenge, Code Whiz, and then we added Incrediflix as a summer enrichment program. We had the fishing derby return last year with the Eastern Angling Club, or the Broadbrooking, excuse me, not live that down if I don't correct myself. We also collected five hundred and eighty-nine Valentines for our community Valentine program last year. Samantha, who's here, started our Instagram page and is on social media daily, getting the word out about our programs and our facilities. We had twenty-three booths at the. Haunted Highway program, which served about two hundred and fifty kids, and we completed our master plan and are facilitating that this year and implementing some of the suggestions that they gave us. And then last year, we started a prom dress drive to benefit East Windsor high school students in need of prom dresses and accessories. So it's not just roll the soccer ball out, I guess, in a nutshell. To your look back, MyRec is our software that we use for registration, and we had a hundred and fifty-two unique programs loaded up into MyRec for our fiscal year twenty-one, and this year, we already have a hundred and two. So our programs are growing, our registrations are growing, both non-resident and resident. And we're, we're facilitating new ideas every day.
Switch back to that, fiscal up to today.
Yes.
That's fiscal twenty-three, should be.
Um.
That's what I was wondering. Sorry. Okay. So this is this is last year versus current year.
Yes.
Okay, so times two. You're you're on pace to basically meet or exceed where you were uh last year.
Yes.
And that doesn't capture what those numbers were during the the real throes of the pandemic.
Yeah. Um some of our uh East Windsor Park uh revenues. Um. We had um taken in in total in twenty one, twenty eight thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. And then last year was thirty three thousand nine hundred and sixty five dollars and seventy eight cents. Uh we added in the concerts, which made our snack bar uh revenues go up. Um extensively, and then we also added in swim lessons again after the pandemic. Uh so we are anticipating um that income will go up. Because Samantha was awarded a grant from the Greater Hartford Foundation. Um community grant, and so we'll be able to offer some lessons to East Windsor residents at no cost this year. Um so. Kudos to her.
Your snack bar receipts doubled?
With eleven concerts. Uh we're anticipating those numbers will go up with the addition of the playground as well. But again, that's something that we just are predicting. We can't. Uh quantify it this time without it being there, but that's my inference. Um so my budget request for this year. Um I incorrectly submitted my salary number, um so I adjusted that. Um. On here for you. And then the minimum wage uh increase is a state mandate and permanent part time increase is also noted here as well.
Questions or comments? Where which one do we want to start with?
I just have a quick question. Um I believe we were told that less being um salary increases would be one point seven five or two percent. Did I miss get that?
Well, so super supervisors have a kind during year three or going into year three of their contract where they have a one point seven five percent base salary.
Yeah.
With a merit component um attached with that involvement's budgeted elsewhere. It's in the non-negotiated wages because it hasn't been reviewed yet. Clerical, it's now eighteen to twenty months out of contract. Um so they're still on their July one twenty one numbers, so there's no increase there. The part time uh permanent part time positions are increasing by an additional dollar an hour to get them to twenty dollars an hour. This is year two of that where we're addressing the salary compaction uh or salary compression that had been happening with the increase in in minimum wage in state. Um public works is out of contracts. There will be no increase noted there. Police remain out of contract, so there will be no increase for police union members there. Dispatchers are still in contract. As are uh. The supervisors in that department and the admin. Uh and then for anybody who's not in a bargaining unit, who's under a contract, it's a two percent wage increase.
And then my question is, under your department expenses, under the detail, you have full time salary based on two point seven five percent. Increase pending now. Is that an exception?
No, so it is actually two seven five because it's the one percent for this year's merit, plus the one point seven five for next year's. So if if you look at Melissa going from one oh five to one oh seven.
Yeah.
It looks like it's two point seven five percent, but one percent is current year because it wasn't budgeted in the twenty three budget. I did that transfer this year.
Oh, okay.
So there's one from this year and one point seven five for next year, and that should be the case for everybody.
And I'm sure there was gonna be a valid uh response to that, thank you, but just put it out there so somebody sees it and why they didn't do forty seven five. And I'm only getting two or I'm only getting one point some five, so I just wanted clarification. Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
I just want to thank Melissa and her staff. I thank you guys for all you do. There's a lot of people that rely on your services and. You guys always do an excellent job and try to take the initiative to be fiscally responsible and still improve things in the community. So really, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Everything's fun and everything's uh. Any other questions or comments?
Well, the in that department expense detail in the book, it it mentions that there's a full time salary contract required as of seven one twenty one.
That's the clerical.
I thought maybe it was something.
No, my first then my first thing that my first thought was, well, that's a typo that should have been fixed. I realized, no, no, that's when it expired.
That's why I wanted that.
Okay. Anything else?
I just questioned whether or not there's enough with the seventeen thousand in there for.
There's not, but we don't really have a better guess. I mean, we're still seeing fire victims from a year ago.
Right, but if history is a guide, then i- if it could wave one and get the the five rooms that we're currently paying for out. Then it probably would be sufficient, but we have not had a lot of success with that so far, so.
I'm anticipating in the next month being able to get rid of two rooms. Um which is one family.
Yeah.
Um because of the side of their family, I had to get them two rooms.
Yeah.
Um so I'm anticipating them coming off the books, um but I still need to pay for their security deposit in first. Two months rent in their new location. Um.
Which could eat up a lot of them.
That's for sure. That's for sure, but so she can be back in four months again. But um the longest serving occupants should be coming to a close this fiscal year.
Yes, unfortunately, she's at the cheapest. Place.
Well, the cheapest place for eighteen months is still expensive.
I know. So hopefully, yes, so technically I will be hopefully in the next couple of months losing three. Again, another one Friday and then anticipating gaining potentially two more. And then if. A um large apartment complex doesn't get their act together, we'll be in some trouble.
And and basically called for an adic appropriation. Oh, yeah.
That's that's a hundred.
Yeah.
Um and and it's, I just want to stress and Melissa covered it, but I want to reiterate, this is the town complying with federal law.
Right.
We're 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 stuck here. Uh and those until solutions present themselves.
And some of the other towns I spoke with, they like turn a blind eye to it. They choose not to do it. And they say bring on the lawsuit. Um City of Hartford got sued for a million dollars. Um I'm not, I don't operate like that.
And I wouldn't expect you to.
And in some of these instances, it's a product of issues that the town should have been aware of over twenty years that that. You know, previous uh. Staff ignored, um and now it's coming home to roost. Now, our our new building official is pretty impressive in terms of making sure that we're adhering to the code and that had not been the case prior to that.
Everybody on the desktop. So it's one guy or this, I'm sorry. Uh what's it called? It is. All ears. Good evening, everyone, and uh for folks at home, because I we all know each other here. Um I'm Roger Hart. I'm the interim police chief. And uh Matt Carroll is the interim deputy chief. And tonight, uh we're here to present the budget. Unfortunately, Chairman Leach had a conflict. Is unable to be here tonight, uh so we'll be presenting without him. So we're gonna start, uh let's talk about what's going on across the nation in policing. Um naturally violent crime is at a ten year high. Uh while property crimes are down, motor vehicle thefts are high, mental health issues continue to be a problem. Across many uh uh cities and towns across the nation. And gun crime, as we all know, is is really spiking nationally. Considering the most recent events in Memphis, we almost understand that police reform is gonna be at the forefront of everybody's mind. So we have to go back and think of what's happened over the last couple of years and how the defund the police was a very loud cry. But when it started to occur. It actually affected us negatively. So we need to consider that with our our public safety and budget plan moving forward. What's happening locally? Well, these were the police department enjoys the support of our community. And we know that because we have over seventeen thousand positive followers on Facebook. And we have excellent positive community engagement, you know, partially thanks to Melissa and her crew. We all work together very well. Uh we have uh Officer Sherman here doing some trick or treating with some children. We have. The circus events that uh took place this last uh October. The stuff a cruiser event that Melissa mentioned. Shop with a cop. And most recently, the Panther plunge. At Saturday, we had uh three officers and. Uh one of the officers, uh significant other was jumped in the water and raised a little bit of money, uh and we all had a good time there. And as far as crime, what's going on? We're actually right on. With the rest of the. We are um violent crime is down, which is good. And vehicle thefts, believe it or not, are down in East Windsor. My property crimes unfortunately are up, and this is based on U C R data from twenty twenty one because the FBI hasn't released twenty twenty two yet. But the good news is. East Windsor is a great community. It's a safe community and it's a good place to live and to work. We do have unique concerns. And this budget that we're gonna talk about tonight is meant to deal with those unique concerns. And we all have to understand that we have to properly fund the programs. One of our accomplishments, uh the East Windsor Police Department achieved tier two accreditation on November fourth, twenty twenty two. This is way ahead of the uh police reform mandate that was put out in twenty twenty. Where uh in. We may sit back and say, okay, that's all well and good. You now you're tier two, but everybody needs to understand, there's ninety six municipal, ninety four municipalities right now that have police departments. Across Connecticut, only forty six of those ninety four, only forty six. Have achieved tier one, tier two, or tier three accreditation, and we are one of those forty six. So I think we're doing really good.
You said tier one, tier two, or tier three? I thought you were gonna say and tier three.
No. It's because many of them haven't even, they're only at tier one. And those are uh statistics, statistics that were put forth by post in October. That was an interesting data we have. So our police department budget, as I talked about it, it's it, we all know budget is a bunch of numbers and we get it. And it is met between seven one, twenty twenty three to six thirty, twenty twenty four. But it's more than just a budget. It's more than just a bunch of numbers. It's about providing. Services to our community, police services, mental health services, equipment, supplies for our police officers. To keep them safe out of out in the world doing their jobs. And the budget that we're gonna discuss tonight has two parts, has a salary part, and that's the first part we'll get into, and the operating expenses. And that's actually the very small portion of our budget. The split is about ninety four percent salary. And I have to admit, this is a repeat slide from last year, but. We must fully understand that what we're talking about here tonight has a history. Many years ago, the people in this community said they wanted an S R O. And that S R O, we're building on it and keeping it year after year, and there's a cost associated with that. The mental health team, we came before you many years ago and talked about a mental health team. We now have the the a basis of our mental health team. And our detective positions are important because we need to be able to do the work that a detective does. But our detectives also do many other things that we don't even know. I mean, they do our background checks for our police officers. They do background checks for. Town employees, so they do a lot of work. And we want to talk about maintaining the services. So here's our budget. So as Melissa talked to you about just moments ago. The numbers that I submitted to you initially are going to be different than the numbers. That are here on this slide presentation tonight. And those are because these reflect what the first selectman and the treasurer wanted us to present to you tonight. There's also one of the small caveat, and I'll explain that when we get to the slide wide my. Um presentation to you, the numbers may be off a little bit, okay? So there's a salary side, there's the operating expense side. We're gonna get into the salary side. So as usual, we've all done this before. I've been before you. You know how we do things. We try to give you as much information. As possible, so you'll see our budget presentation. There's gonna be a document that looks like this. It's our budget commentary. Where we go into every line and we try to explain it as best we can. Of what that those expenditures are for that specific line, and those are submitted to you uh originally and should be in your packet. So let's get into the salaries, the part one of the budget. First of all, we have twenty six rural police officers, including Matt and I. We have ten full time administrative people. Those administrative are essentially civilian people. And three part time, the two A C Os and the part time uh social worker. The first line is a line that is gonna be different from what's in your packet. And especially in the com- commentary page, and I'll explain that. Um the number is different because of that F Y twenty twenty three adopted versus F Y twenty twenty three adjusted. In my packet submitted to you, I use adjusted instead of adopted. Um because remember, we presented to you, we had the um. Officer who had her M S W and she resigned, and then we asked that that salary be transferred from clerical. And remember, we did all that. When I was done, that was adjusted by Amy after the the. The uh budget was adopted, so that's why there's a little bit difference there. In fact, this line shows a reduction. There's is a slight increase. It's a point nine five percent increase. And that is over the ad- adjusted budget, and you'll see that in the commentary, I believe. It's roughly two thousand dollars, I think. And that's because the uh you Melissa just talked about it, the one seven five percent for the supervisors. There's two supervisors who have salaries in the clerical line. The rest of the clerical are two people. They they did not, they're in the clerical union, so therefore there's no raises. The officer salary line decreased by a a very small amount mainly because of the retirement of. Uh because one officer left and another very senior officer retired and they were replaced by uh lower paid people. Dispatcher salary, they do are in contract right now and they do have uh slight raises. We did have, again, the same thing. We have uh people going up in the step increases, so their salary goes up. And then we had uh the dispatcher move from the dispatcher position last year to an officer position. So when we hire somebody, it's gonna be at the lowest rate for a dispatcher. The admin salary, this was kind of a unknown at the time. Um I did. Um talk to uh to treasurer and the first selectman, and this is a number, that's over we came up with that. Time, this is for the chief and the deputy chief. Time. This is for the chief and the deputy chief's position. The part-time salary line, um. This is for. The social worker. And this does include a two percent increase. As a standard for the permanent part-time employees. And we just decided to keep it flat. Having talked with Amy, uh we have enough money in that to keep it at uh a flat. It it does show a hundred percent increase because again, this is the part about. The adjusted versus the adopted budgets. So in your packets, it shows the actual increase over the adjusted. And it's flat. Overtime, we kept it at a flat rate. I did notice a typo in the packet that I gave you. This includes not only police officer overtime, it also includes dispatcher overtime. So there's a slight typo in the packet that I gave you, and uh this does include holiday rates. And everything is in that. And essentially, it's about. If you look at, if you combine the officer salary, the dispatcher salary. And then it's about twelve and a half to thirteen percent of that, and that's. Number when we're fully staffed, that number has been a pretty solid number for us. Unfortunately, we've gone through some times where. In in past several months, we had five office, we're down five officers there for a while because a couple were out. On uh. Maternity leave and other leaves, injury leave. Uh, and the vacancy that uh the retirement of chief created as well. But we're getting better. The training salary, I decided to just keep that at uh. Um, flat because of uh we take the. Your letter very seriously, and we're trying to keep this number as. As as low as we possibly can. And I think that when we get to the end, you'll see we did our due diligence. The longevity because of the same reason I told you before, relative to the officer salary, we had a very senior officer leave. Uh, and then a uh another person leave one. Uh, union and go to another and had a slight effect on it, so the decrease was uh that small. So that's our salary line overall, point two four percent increase in the salary line. So let's move on to the operating expenses. The big six percent of our budget. But even though it's six percent of our budget. And because we kept, we're able to keep the salary so low because of circumstances. With the officers being out, I figured this now is a time to maybe eke those up a little bit, especially this particular one. And the main reason is because of the state mandates from the Police Reform Act. The Police Reform Act required us to send, and I I did some commentary in the packet, explained it a little bit. But we have to do drug testing. Another state and unfunded state mandate. And the drug testing and the psychological evaluation for twenty percent of our force every year for five years, and then it goes again. So that's the fifteen hundred dollars is basically the three hundred dollars times five. This is kind of a placeholder. It's in our budget, but it's not. Uh, the dog fund. Is funded by the licensing of the dogs in the town. And we kept it exactly the same. Vehicle maintenance, this number has worked for us for uh several years. Uh, we have a solid fleet. We keep it well maintained and. This is uh. This amount has worked for us for. A little over twenty vehicles. So we're doing a pretty good job on that, I think. Travel, I kept it at uh no increase at all at a thousand dollars. This is a main expense that goes with this is our easy pass. It is parking uh when detectives have to go out of town. It's a nominal amount, and sometimes if we don't have a vehicle. And an officer needs to go to a training and they take their own vehicle, then we would be required to do the reimbursement for travel. But we we usually have a vehicle, so that doesn't come up very often. Supplies again, I I want to keep it as low as possible, but. Eke in a little increase because the cost of everything is is going up. So I uh just bumped it up two percent, the four hundred and four increase. And you'll see that repeat on. A couple other things. So. This particular is the equipment line where we're asked to, if there's any equipment issues that we need. Um, to bring it forward. I remember last year, I stood before you and we talked about the replacement of our firearms. Well, and that was for the uh six thousand five hundred and twenty five. Uh, we accomplished that. Our firearms are completely replaced and our weapons were set back to Glock. So we're we completed that project. But this project is for our capital region emergency services unit. The unit itself has been using the same helmets and tactical vests for many years, though. And those. Helmets and vests degrade after time, and their ballistic capabilities become less and less. And so the uh team commanders ask us to budget for our individual to allow them to purchase a new vest. And helmet, excuse me. They're going to purchase. That as a group, so they got a reduced rate. The quote was almost six or seven months old when I did this presentation and the presentation you have before you. So I added a five percent increase in that as well to get that number. Uniforms, again, everything is a little more expensive, it seems. Costs a little more, so I wanted to eke in a two percent increase, which is just under a thousand dollars in the uniform line. News and fees, same story. Classes are costing more. Um, everything is costing more, we're finding out. So again, I just eked in the two percent increase on that. And we're not going to feel it too bad in the end. It's a point five nine percent increase. On the operating expense side. Which is one thousand three hundred and thirteen dollars.
Point five one?
Point five nine. Point five nine on the, yeah. And just just for the folks at home and anybody else who doesn't know, this does not include the benefits. Those those benefits are in another portion of the town's budget.
It also it also doesn't include the contract that's out.
Correct. Correct. The two contracts that are police and clerical. Yeah.
Yeah. Sorry to remind you.
So this brings us to a point two six. Which is using the first selectmen's numbers. That and maybe in conflict with the handouts that I gave you, that's a point two five. I apologize for the spot of one time of a percent. Um. So that brings us to the end of this presentation. Any questions? And I hope I was able to. To stay with our standard of PowerPoint presentation to make you folks happy. This was a sad day, but a proud day. Um. I was very proud of our people. This was the funeral of the Bristol officers. And we were able to put together a good contingency to go down.
Questions on the police department?
One quick question and um. In longevity, you mentioned in the detail that that covers higher education degrees, educational incentive, and then also dues and fees. It lists one of the re- one of the things that makes up the fees is the educational reimbursement associated with collective bargaining rules. How is that different?
The the differences, one is when you go to school, that's the one in the dues and fees. You go to school, you you obtain a certain grade, you some pay for the for the classes, three credits.
Let's get her the masters and stuff.
Yes, you get that money reimbursed back to you. The educational incentive is in each co- collective bargaining agreement, there's a certain amount of money that is paid out. For an associate's degree, a bachelor's degree. And that on both the. Yeah, both the dispatchers and the police. Are is built into a part of their hourly rate. That's why you see in the sheet that I give you on the salaries themselves. At the bottom, I use that that same twelve percent to count for the overtime as well in that because the longevity is also affected by the overtime.
You said you had three animal control officers.
Two animal control officers and one social worker. That's our part.
Oh, two animal.
Two animal controls, one social.
Any animal control, the uniforms that they were in your police budget under uniforms, but what about the expenses for the operation of that building? That we have.
That's.
To that, that that dog pound line.
Yeah.
The um animal control, thirty nine thousand dollars, and it's that gets sent to another fund. The dog fund, and that's where all the fees are collected and the officers are paid from and any other associated. Like the dog slips that have to get ordered. All that stuff is done under another fund. So we just have to get general contribution is in their budget. But all the rest of the stuff is in a different fund.
When did that change? Because that's different.
Always.
It's been like that.
It's been that way since I got here.
I I did change, though. I think I think.
You changed it.
I think that's correct, yes.
All right.
Yeah.
All right. So I was just saying, well, where do you all go? Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah, I think like in the last year that Kim was here, I think that's when the change.
There. It used to be in activities and fees. I believe so, yeah. And governed in your budget, and you guys can have it. Um. So uh where do you stand now in terms of vacancies? What positions are vacant?
We currently only have the the chief's uh vacancy right now.
Dispatches full boat and um.
We have one person in the works. That have has a conditional offer for the dispatch. If they make it through the background, they're going to be hired.
Awesome. And uh A C O?
Uh, we have somebody going through the background right now.
Cool. That that is great.
Yeah, yeah, we're looking good, and and I even have somebody hopefully for that vacant officer's position to depending on how things go.
Nice. Oh, this is the, we talked about.
Yes.
Okay. No, why nor will I share a sheet. Any other uh questions?
I remember an issue with cars and funding at one point. This past year. Something about because you couldn't get a certain car and then the price went up.
Oh, that was, I think, a couple of years ago. That was when. That was um nineteen twenty, I believe.
I think there was an issue while you were on a medical lead, if I'm not mistaken, that uh Deputy Carl was. Because I was at that police commission meeting.
Correct.
Is that the one you're talking about?
Yes.
Correct. Want to share some shed some light on that?
Well, yeah, so we we were able to get the standard boards, so we had to go with Tahoe's.
Right.
The question was, do we buy purchase two Tahoe's with the the fact that there was depleted. We did flee all throughout the whole uh nation, and we ordered one Tahoe. I actually ordered two and the deputy chief, then deputy chief, no chief, um. Cancelled that second one, so that but it's in the capital group's fund and that fund, the money's still there.
Okay, okay.
So that whole thing had been resolved.
Well, yeah, we're fine. And the reason why, when I came back and. Okay, it doesn't really matter, but I stopped it and fixed it and. Uh, we still have some of the capital improvement because we were also getting a grant vehicle. Remember, we had used grant money.
Yeah.
It was about a forty thousand dollar grant, which wouldn't cover the complete car and equipment.
Yes.
And we also use that forty thousand dollars for something else, and can't remember, just off the top of my head. So about thirty seven thousand of a which to purchase a vehicle plus another five thousand in equipment for the S R O car, which is a grand car.
Oh, okay.
Then I used some of the funding. From the capital. Uh, vehicle line.
Yeah.
To outfit that car completely.
Okay.
And it just has has been, it was finished last week. We have it in the lot right now.
Okay.
Um. So we do have, we did get two cars, one from a grant and one through the capital, and there's still a little bit of line. Money left there depending on and how we can. And we may be able to spend that carryover for the next year.
Okay.
On vehicles.
Wouldn't next year, though, be your three-year? Year or your three-car year?
Um, I think I only put in for two in the capital this year because our fleet looks good.
Okay.
We're we're in good shape, and that pad, that pattern hasn't necessarily been. Followed over the last three or four years.
Okay, because I know it used to be, we used to guys every year fund for two and a half cars and then alternate. Between buying two and three, then two, then three.
Yeah. I think we were funded for two.
We had two, two or three Jag rids since I've been here. So in five years, we've gotten three vehicles.
Okay.
Through Jag rids.
Plus, there was the one that was replaced through Kerma.
Yeah, when we had a relatively new one um crash.
Crash, right.
Yeah, okay.
I think we're in good shape, and I think Scotty has been doing a good job of making sure there's. More than the two cars. Like what two cars equals, and then make sure there's some portion other than that.
And that was my intent to leave a little bit of money in that to to help that.
In that outfitting and all that stuff, especially if you switch between Ford and Chevy.
Well, I know, and that was part of the conversation that commission made was that you couldn't take the equipment from the other cars and transfer some.
Cars are a little more expensive.
Yeah. So. But the good news is that trend is going to end soon, as long as Ford doesn't change the model. Because in twenty twenty, that's when they changed.
Yeah.
So we're catching up to that. We're getting, we're uh right now, our twenty eighteen S U Vs are the oldest. So they're going to be replaced. The next year is the Chevy Tahoe's. The next year is the twenty twenties. So we should be able to take all the equipment out of the twenty twenties and put them in the twenty twenty fives or twenty twenty sixes.
Okay.
As long as Ford doesn't change, but who knows?
Good question, Charlie. Any other questions or comments? Chief, the floor is yours.
Next one. Okay. It is a emergency management. This one should go pretty fast. Quick little glance over the budget, you'll see there are a lot of zeros over in that side, but one little boost, and I'll explain that when we get to it. So the stipend, we're keeping it exactly the same uh. At twenty three thousand five hundred dollars. Um, hypothetically, when we get everything. Back to normal with the hierarchy of the police department, maybe, and we make a determination on E M moving forward. But this funds two people and then a stipend for uh a stipend, a small stipend for two other people. Next is the telephone line. Uh, that is just basically funds the telephone line that goes into the the emergency operations center. And it. There hasn't really been any increase, and I checked it, and we were right on, right on that uh. Number looked like it was going to be a good number for us. The communications, this is uh. The money that funds the Everbridge suite. Which allows us to reach out to all the folks every uh. Anytime we need to get a message out. A non-emergency message, that is. This is uh the equipment maintenance line where our. Um, all of our generators are maintained out of this line. We have a contract with uh a service company that comes out twice a year and does service on all of our generators. And we had, we um Joe recently, I think about two years ago, put the attic or the old police department generator on the town hall annex. And that's a pretty old generator. And usually when they come out and work on these older generators, there's always a cost associated with when they come. The battery needs to be replaced, the hoses and everything, and that's why I decided just to bump that a little bit up. It looks like a lot, but it doesn't affect the overall budget that much in the end. Um, supplies are kept flat. The overall increase on that side of the budget is uh five percent, but the overall increase on the entire budget is only two percent.
I heard it was lagging like crazy. Like a slide and a half binder.
Really?
Yeah.
But good news. The E M P G grant reimburses the town each year. The last reimbursement we got uh was six thousand four hundred and seventeen dollars. The EMPG grant reimburses the town each year. The last reimbursement we got uh was six thousand four hundred and seventeen dollars.
Which was probably for two thousand and nineteen.
But the EMPG grant is federal funds that trickle through the state and then come to us, so that's why there's the delay. Um, this, this may have been the COVID because it's a little higher for some reason. I think they threw a little bit of extra money. And there's also some good news out there. We are also eligible for, we have to redo our. Um, LEOP, which is a local emergency operation plan. And I'm in the process of redoing that. It's gotta be changed and has has hit a whole bunch of standards. And we have to submit that by January twenty twenty four, but the good news is if we do that. I've put our name in the in the process to get a five thousand reimbursement for for doing the work on that, so that'll go to. To reimburse this uh program as well.
That's a one time, right?
One time.
Yeah.
Yeah. On top of the EMPG. So, as I mentioned. Overall increase of uh two percent and I think it's it's a wise increase based on the equipment. Any questions?
Thank you.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Communications. So um, the way communications works um for many years now, I've been kind of. I wanna wanna say about fourteen years now, I've been keeping an eye on this line, communication line um. It was kind of managed by the the communication committee that was formed back when they grew up within the newer system. And then that committee kind of fell apart and I was asked to manage it. So that's why it kind of fell in my lap and I've been keeping an eye on it ever since. So, because like any budget, unless somebody's keeping an eye on it, sometimes hands go in there and take things out and it tends to disappear. So, we've been kind of keeping a close eye on it. Um. In this is the radio system. We currently contract with Marcus Communication right now. We have a service agreement with them. And that's the first line for the radio system. Um. Wow, that color is weird. What is that, three percent?
Yeah.
Uh, three percent increase um. I just built that in because just assuming there's going to be a slight increase. That's Marcus has. Really kept it flat, but every now and again they'll bump it up a little bit, so I'm anticipating them bumping up the service agreement. Um, it's usually, and this also includes equipment. Uh, so say for example, the service agreement deals with the main infrastructure of the radio system. Dispatch consoles are on there as well, but not the individual radios. So the service agreement is around fifteen thousand and the rest is for equipment if something fails. In a mobile radio or we just recently had to re-tune some of the senior center radios. They weren't. Um, able to communicate well because they're old radios and they get out of tune. Plus they had some broken damage to knobs. I mean, the overall cost was less than a thousand dollars to have them repaired and get them back out on the road. But that's what that money is for. And the next part of it is dispatch for Talon County and this it seems like a big increase because last year. It was so small and that was an anomaly. This particular line over my tenure here. Has never been this low. It was usually because remember it included the dispatch. For talent for both fire departments and the ambulance at one time. So it was closing in on fifty thousand dollars, this particular budget. But since the fire departments have split off and EMS is kind of handling their own, this is the bill that um Talon County sent us this year. Over last year.
This is, this does cover EMS.
Yeah.
So the when the two fire departments pay their own way. Um, and then they, there was a significant drop in FY twenty from twenty two to twenty three, like.
Before.
Yeah, actually, you've got the history there if you wanted to look at. Uh, uh, yes, that should be.
Well, because originally we didn't know uh in that proposal, we only had the five hundred dollars. We didn't know um. They were gonna change your structure, but I think Mr. Burton did a good job the other night explaining that now it's a per call. In addition to the flat fee.
Yeah. That's right, because they they didn't send us the letter until after these were, so these were printed on like January twenty fifth and I got the letter on the twenty eighth.
Yeah. But I have adjusted your sheet in the file to have the forty five hundred dollar number in it.
Just adjusting here.
Yeah, yeah.
So the overall increase, it's a mandatory increase and and.
So did you reset that that includes?
EMS.
It's only EMS.
Ambulance pays there independently. They're all, I thought that was the emergency management.
Emergency back.
So. We're paying for the ambulance?
Yeah.
We always have. There used to be an agreement um. That expired probably.
Two thousand thirteen.
I was gonna say ten years ago, so I would have been right on the money.
Yeah.
Um, and and that covered a lot of things. One of them was uh coverage for town county dispatch.
And they're on our workers' comp also.
And it covered like the.
They reimburse us for.
Later. They make a lot of money when they don't care anymore, so you know, if it's time to move it. It's my thing.
Time to move what?
Move them out of us paying for their service and move them out of paying for their.
That's not what I thought you meant.
They do an excellent job. I don't have no problem with their service. Their service is excellent. But if they're self sustaining, they'll not be self sustaining because we have a couple of areas that we don't hope them to be self sustaining. Um, so I just throw it out there. Things change.
Any other questions or comments?
No, not right now.
Oh, nice.
And before I leave, I want to thank you guys.
Didn't say anything when I first looked.
Thank you all for your volunteerism and your dedication to the town. I really appreciate it. I know the town's.
Excellent job.
Thank you.
Um, so I have to start my share screen. Arts and Culture, you're next in the batting order. That was gonna be a tough.
Alright, Deputy Williams, Chair of the East Windsor Arts and Culture Committee. Um, first, on behalf of the committee, I'd like to thank you for adding us as a line item to the budget last year. On the last time I was, in front of you, I didn't have a lot to report because we were only a couple of months old and um we had. We started off by having a logo contest and it took us a year, but we did get a logo, so. We purchased some business cards with them. That's our. New line down. Or our, our, not new. Our only logo.
That is awesome.
Yeah, isn't that kind of nice? And um, in the past year, we have. Done a lot. In the interest of time, I'm not gonna go through everything that we've done. But I did want to give you a summary of our bigger projects. To show you how busy we've been.
Thank you.
Currently, we have two projects ongoing with East Windsor High School. Um, the first one is going to be a um. Fence cup project, so there is a tennis court fence that faces the soccer field and the track. It's also gonna be facing where they're holding graduation. And we have purchased um six foot high letters that spell out Panther pride in black, gold and white. And in the middle of it is gonna be the gold and black Panther head. Um, we just ordered it this week, so um it should be here in a couple of weeks and we're gonna install it with the help of some high school students. Who need community service hours, so it should be up within the next month. And it'll be up for the next couple of years through graduation and you know, it'll be up for spring sport and everything this year. Um, the other project we're gonna be working on is a graduation project for graduating seniors. They're each gonna receive. A palette board that has been sanded down and painted white and then they can customize it however they would like to with their name or the. Name of the college they're going to, branch of service they're going into. You know, flowers, whatever decoration they want, and then we'll put it up as one big art installation for graduation. And when graduation is over, they can each take their palette board back with them and take it wherever they go or give it to a family member. Whoever they want. Um, when those two projects or at least when one of them is done, we're gonna start talking about um putting a mural on the outside of. East Windsor High School.
Where?
Uh, we haven't decided yet. It's probably either gonna go on the equipment shed or the wall that heads into the back um entrance to the school where the gym is. Um, we're also doing two projects at Broadbrook School. The first one is a mural that's gonna be painted on the outside of the cafeteria. While um heading into the office. Um, every year they put on a one school, one book event. Um, all of the students read the same book and then they have um an event around that. Um, they've been doing it for ten years, so we are gonna, the mural is gonna depict the spines of the ten books they have read so far. And leave space for future books to be added to it. Um, two of the members of our um Arts and Culture Committee are actually gonna be the muralists on this piece. And then one other person from town. The other um project that we have at Broadbrook School is going to be a rock river. All of the graduating fourth graders are gonna be given a river rock that they can customize and then that will be placed on. By the front sidewalk in front of the gym and then every year the next fourth grade class is gonna do the same thing. They're just gonna keep adding to it. And it's gonna build a rock river. Um, and then. We're also talking to Broadbrook about putting a mural inside the school because right now all the walls are just a plain white and so. Um, they want to add some color there. Um, recently the Warehouse Point Library reached out to us. They want to put a mural on the wall of their children's section. Um, it's gonna be some kind of. Friendly dinosaur um to kind of go along. With um the fact that the first dinosaur bones found in North America were found here in East Windsor. So they're gonna um build on that idea. Um, the more we talk to them, we also talked about displaying some local artists' work in the. Um, back room off of their children's section. We talked about doing a kids' handprint activity with a dinosaur footprint. Along with it and then there's two columns leading into the um young adult section that we're also going to paint. So several projects stemming off that one. Um, our first big project last year was the mural at the Connecticut Trolley Museum. Um, we are partnering with them again to do a car cards project. Our cards are the advertisements that are shown at the top of the trolleys on the inside. Um, we're gonna have middle and high school students recreate car cards, but um with current. Um, local business advertisements, so they are gonna reach out. To businesses, see if they want to advertise and then they're gonna draw their logo or some kind of um. A design around their business. And those are gonna be um in the static cars that are in the museum though. Um, last year during the Parts and Concert Series, we held three um arts and crafts showcases. Um, the third one was on National Night Out where we did a community. Uh, collaboration. We just had a blank canvas and people could come over and just add whatever design they wanted to it. Uh, we then housed it in the Warehouse Point Library for the month of August and it now resides in the um police lobby. So we're planning to do another project like that this summer. And also this spring in collaboration with the East Windsor Soccer Club, um they commissioned us to paint the kickboard at Osborne Field. We have several high school students working on this project. They create the design and when the weather gets warmer, um they're gonna paint it there. It's gonna have the um East Windsor Soccer Club logo on it and uh an action shot of a boy and a girl playing soccer.
Is is that the action shot?
That's it. That's just the first rough. Draft.
Looks pretty cool.
Yeah, it's gonna be more detailed than that when it's finished. So those are just a few of the things that we um have been working on this last year. We are not asking for an increase in budget this year. We're asking for uh four thousand dollars again, same as we received last year. Fifteen hundred dollars of that would go towards community pop-up workshops featuring visiting artists. Um, originally, we thought we could hold those in the town hall annex, but recently the owner of the Broadbrook. Um, Center for the Arts has reached out to us and said that we could use that space. So we imagined we would hold three of these visiting artist series um and they would. Um. Be local people teaching their craft like Karen Sabalone, who did this beautiful display over here, has offered to teach a pottery class. Um, Frank Dzik could probably teach a photography class. Um, Jim Taylor, who um wrote a comic book, could do the, you know, talk about. Doing illustrations and writing a comic book, so things like that. Um, we also talked about doing a plein air workshop where you uh take a group of people and you bring them to the scenic area. In East Windsor and they and they paint outside in the fresh air. Um. We are allowing five hundred dollars to participate in a local street fair. We had heard that the Broadbrook Opera House was possibly putting on one this summer, but if they don't. Um, we would invite murals to do a live demonstration at a pre-existing event or one of our making. Um, we had reached out to Broadbrook Garage about painting on their retaining wall. Um, and we had secured an artist for that. Um, conversations have lapsed in the past couple of months, but if we revive that. Uh, we talked about making that into um an event where Ben would be painting and people could come and you maybe have a food truck and. People could watch him work. So that's what that project would be. Um, the next one, five hundred dollars to create a collaborative piece of artwork at the Summer Concert Series. Um, to coincide with National Night Out again. Um, here are some ideas. This one was done by Chris Gann, who's a local artist and he did this for a park in. Either Bloomfield or Grand Bay and it's just a bunch of um. Plywood pieces put together and it's kind of like a panoramic scene of a park. Um, this is a larger version of the kind of thing that we did last year. This is a take on um. At the Before I Die wall in New Orleans, um. We would have something different written in the top like East Windsor means to me or I wish or you know, I'd like to. And then there's all these blank spaces underneath that people could fill in. Another idea was to get everybody the same um. Canvas. This one just has a circle on it and then you can kind of get an idea of. How creative people can be with the same template. So those are just a couple of ideas of collaborative community pieces. Yeah. And they could be hung together separately. We asked for five hundred dollars for uh materials and supplies for contests, um creating artwork and displaying artwork. Um, we talked about doing maybe another photography contest. We're currently running one right now. Um, but if it is successful, then we talked about running another one. And we also talked about creating artwork and idea we had was um. This puzzle project. Similar to the circles, everybody gets the same puzzle piece. And then they can decorate it however they want to and then these pieces can be fit together and displayed. Together or they could be displayed singly. Around town. We asked for five hundred dollars for commissions for local artists to create pieces in their fields and um for this one, we wanted to do a little something different. Um, I have a couple of examples. This person worked with mosaics and they filled in like little potholes. Around town and this is yarn. And then the um yarn bombing. Can look a couple of different ways. We would um pay for the supplies for that. And just have people bring their talents. Um, an alternative idea. Um, an alternative idea, if we don't use those, is to do an art and seek um, kind of competition where every day for maybe one month, we would hide a different small piece of artwork that was created by a local artist somewhere around town and give them clues about where to find it. And when they find it, they can keep it. And the last one is stipends or incentives for groups that we collaborate with for projects and operational funds. Um, for example, when the kids do the soccer kickboard, we can't pay them to paint that because they're doing it for community service, but we can pay to get pizza and drinks for them while they do it, things like that. Same thing with our artists. We can't pay the artists that are doing the Broadbrook School mural because they're on the commit, the committee. But we can, you know, treat them to a snack while they're working hard. So it'd be things like that. The operational funds, the materials, like currently we're trying to purchase a display rack so that we can display the local art that we have. And then I just have a few other ideas. One is to do a mosaic on the wall in a park. And the other one is to do um, kinda like, yeah, I know, the door with the window on top. And if you place it in a park, depending on where you look through the porthole, you'll get a different view over whatever it's looking at to. And depending on where you place it, you could look through it from either side. That's about one one hundredth of all our big ideas for next year.
You guys are certainly not uh, hurting or enthusiastic. Any questions or comments for, for Doug? So as you can see, she's got a million ideas and their budget is acceptable from uh, this year to next. Question or comments?
I think you guys are doing some great stuff. I, I like seeing how much community involvement has um, are all evolved around this group. Um, it seems like, you know, every event the town's having, you guys are there. Um, whether it's introducing something or including people into something um, current. Uh, you guys always seem to be there and on top of things, so I commend you guys for, for getting out there and, and actually participating a lot and.
Thank you. And that's our goal. And we surely wanted to be collaborative. Like, we don't wanna approach an organization and say, we'll do this for you. But to say, let's do this together. So they either have to put in, you know, some of the effort or the idea, or you know, some money of their own. And so it's truly a collaborative effort. And then they're invested in the project. And we still have yet to reach out to so many groups and organizations and businesses here in town, but that's our plan, systematically working our way through, so.
How's the um, sculpture, the wood sculpture coming for the HRC?
It's unknown. Um, our first one was completed but fell through because the artist would only accept cash. And with the town as our physical agent, we couldn't pay them cash. So uh, I reached out to another um, chainsaw artist and I thought we would be good because they um, did a piece of work for the city of Bristol. And so I thought, oh, perfect. But I reached out to him and he's the same. They don't go out to W and I's and they wanna be paying cash, so. Um, I'm still working on it, but it's gonna be hard to.
Chainsaw carving was so anarchist.
That's a verse.
So, we're still trying to work on it. He, he did say we can have it back.
Finished?
I should show you the piece. It's beautiful. It came out really nice. It was one hundred percent complete. Like, two weeks before that, you guys say, how you gonna? The whole thing fell through, so. What's too bad?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Mrs. Hills?
Yes. They don't have any M P hour points. So I got you some colored books.
Uh, I'll get some mileage out of that.
Jason, just tell me who's, who's talking to you there?
Uh, Anna Hills?
Okay, with which council, which group? Thank you.
This year we asked for three thousand dollars. Um, we didn't ask for anything last year because we didn't. So um, right now, last year we did a lot of planning. And this year we're taking that and doing a lot of implementation. We have um, help us go by what we have and then we'll go through it one by one. We have a witness stone project we've been working on for about a year. We have the diversity, equity, equity and inclusion three-part series. Monthly library diversity displays, national light out, and social media engagement. So the first thing we're gonna talk about is the Witness Stone Project. And basically what it is, is um, we look for enslaved people that lived in town. And what we like to do is, we'll, we'll team up with the Witness Stone Project. And what they do is they help us out. Usually their um, sweet spot is eighth grade American history. They've done high school as an elective. Um, but what they do is they'll come in. They come in for a few weeks. They help gather the information from the town halls, from the historical societies and from the records. And then they help put the students, they help them put everything together. At the end, when it's all done, what they do is they actually put a witness stone, which is a stone with the enslaved person's name on it. And they place that stone whether, where they um, lived, worked, or worshipped. I know that right now, West Hartford in, they're really big on this and they have a place in their cemetery that is um, that's just for these witness stones and it keeps growing every year. We had some folks um, that explained that they're witness stone projects. Some of the students started in ninth grade and they continued it to high school. Or to graduation. And what I wanted to do is just focus on the second page because when we first put this out, we put this idea out, there was a lot of, oh, there was no slavery in Connecticut. There was no slavery in trial. But in seventeen eighty-four, the state of Connecticut passed a legislation freeing any child born onto enslaved after March of nineteen seventeen eighty-four. But not until that child reached age twenty-five. It did nothing to free the mother or the father. And in Connecticut, slavery continued to around the nineteenth century. So there is a lot of information on that. If you look at the last pages of that section, and you have families who own slaves enslaved people. I hate the word slaves. Um, they owned enslaved people. If you go by town, you see that East Windsor is on there a couple of times. And what that does is it gives us information, lets us know that there were enslaved people in East Windsor. And it gives us something to go by and say, we can start with these names. We at least have names and we have addresses. Something we can do. This project costs the license for this project costs um, six thousand dollars.
You, you know what's interesting about this?
What is?
Some of the names on here that are identified as East Windsor probably would not have been East Windsor under the current configuration.
Been Windsor.
I know, South Windsor. So we were incorporated seventeen sixty-eight. South Windsor wasn't incorporated until the eighteen hundreds. But Bissell, uh, what's his name? Uh, Ezekiel Bissell, I think, was a South Windsor resident. What current-day South Windsor?
When we do this project and you give them the money, we'll figure that out. Okay?
I, you know, I would nerd out for a second as well. I'll, I'll calm down.
Um, the total cost for this project is five thousand dollars. That's an old cost. They let us have that cost because of the town um, can because of how much work is already put into this. They let us have that cost. They made an exception for it that they would take a down payment until we got the rest of the funding in. And the way we're gonna get the funding in is through fundraising. We're gonna go through the schools. We're gonna go through the um, local businesses. And we're gonna make that money. Does anyone have any questions on that Witness Stone project?
So there had been talk at a point in time uh, about you working in collaboration with the Board of Education on this?
Yes, we're still doing that. We have have the worst memory in the world. I've spoken to um, Patrick Tujin. He's interested. The Assistant Superintendent, he's interested. Um, I spoke to Patrick Assistant today. She's interested. Um, I need to reach out to Barrow Will Yard. Um, I reached out to, um, I didn't know that the high school has a diversity center now.
I didn't either.
And I reached out to them and I explained to them what the project is about with them. We told them that we would take the cost. Because we were asking to pay for that.
That's a part.
Okay. So we're gonna move to the three-part series that we've got going on. We did one part, but it was um, seven or eight months ago, so we're gonna do it again. And it's three parts. The first part is our journey into inclusive excellence. That was a fantastic class. It really just talked about how um, we can be together. And the part that I remembered is she said that America is a melting pot. And she explained it as, why do you wanna be a pot mushed all together with all these flavors? Let's be a salad with all these different flavors and different textures. And so that's what's really stuck in my mind. It was fantastic. We got a lot of great feedback. And we can't wait to do it again because the seven, three, um, months went by. We wanna start over so that we can do them closer together. And we picked those dates and I will tell you. I'm telling you, I have the worst memories, so we won't even talk about that right now. The dates are March fifteenth at five o'clock, April fifth at six thirty, and May second at six thirty. They're all gonna be at the Brad, Broadbrook Elementary School in the cafeteria.
March fifteenth, April first, and May well?
May second. I'm sorry? Six thirty. The first one is the five thirty and the other two is six thirty. And this one doesn't cost anything to us because the town paid for it because it was so fantastic and got such great feedback. So we're gonna do that. Um, the last one is navigating difficult conversations. And that's one that I got a lot of um, great feedback on. People are waiting for that one because that one is really something that's gonna hit home for everyone. We're gonna look at our own biases and we're gonna talk about those and how do you talk about those? Okay. That's part of what we're doing.
Five, six, thirty, six, thirty?
Five thirty, six thirty, six thirty. And the money that um, we're using for advertising is gonna come out of this budget. We're gonna put together flyers and we're gonna put the hand together handouts and we're gonna get those out to the town. The second page just talks about what the group does that does this. It's called the Executive Mommy Group. And this is what they do. This is what they do all day, every day. The next section is our Facebook page. And right now, um, there's not a lot out there. And because we spent a lot of our time last year to coming up with things, yeah, um, putting things together. There was really nothing to report. But this year there is, so we're gonna have an active Facebook page. We're gonna advertise. We're gonna cross advertise and we're gonna really get our names out there. This year, we, um, here's some examples of what we put out there. We put out there the Holocaust remembers day. And we put a section out there for Black History Month. We're not only doing the Christian holidays. We're doing um, all the holidays that we can fund. My favorite is the Wall-E. I can't wait for that one to come out. Does anyone have any questions on Facebook? And, and the money for that is gonna be for trademarks.
Trademarks?
Trademarks.
What do you, what do you trademark?
We can't steal pictures.
Oh, you're gonna, I see. You're gonna license them?
License.
I thought you were applying for a trade. Like, you're gonna license them?
We gotta apply for a trade. Um, but yes, we're gonna, we're gonna license them and we're gonna have to pay for that. Okay? And then the last one is my favorite one. It's the Colors of the World. And that's what's in front of you in the crayons. They um, reflect the multiple, multiple colors for the multiple skins for the multiple um, for the diversity that is where we live, is what we do. And so we would add those to the regular box of crayons. Um, what we have here is on National Night Out, we're gonna have a booth which um, some of the money is going to pay for the ten by ten tent. It's going to pay for the logo and it's gonna pay for um, the wrap to go around the ten by ten. And what we have is the um, the little face. And it's try yourself in whatever color you want. It can be blue, it can be purple, it can be brown. It doesn't matter, but we just want you to try your face. And what we'll do is we'll just pick those up somewhere. We haven't figured that out yet. We got some things for you too. And what we're doing, because we only have the two pages, we're still working on this. We have reached out to Crayola. We have reached out to um, folks who work with Crayola. And we're getting the um, licenses in order to make copies of the books set so that we can distribute those. And they can come in and they said that they might uh, come in depending on what it's like and how how much feedback we get. They'll come in and they'll talk to us about the process and about what they did. Um, a couple other things. Don't ask me anything. Not really. Okay, well, um, regarding our fundraising, we're working with Amy O'Toole. She's gonna show us how to do that. We have also reached out to the State of Connecticut Diversity and Equity Department. We're gonna partner with them with the work that they do and they're gonna help us find grants. This is what they told us.
Who are they through?
I don't know who they're through, but it's their own thing. Like, he was we just Googled it and we found it. We were like, let's call these people. We just Googled it and we found it, and we're like, let's call these people, let's see what's going on, we're calling everybody. And we have partnered with the city of Bristol, Diversity Council. And if you've ever gone on their page, they're fantastic, they've got it going on, and they're light years ahead of what we. Do now, and we want to copy them. No shame in that. So we're asking for three thousand dollars to make this happen. If we don't get the finalization on the Witness Stone Project because of timing. We're going to use the money for everything else. Otherwise, we're going to fundraise for everything. We're going to make it happen. Any question?
Any questions for Anna?
You mentioned you were fundraising for this, basically the second half of the Witness Stone Project, did you? Approach the Board of Education for the other half?
We haven't yet, we've. We've just started because it's gone around and around about who we talk to about it. And the last person that I talked to, or that I'm going to talk to, is Dara Willard.
Rulard.
Rulard. And we're going to talk to him about it, I have spoken to Randy. The chair on the Board of Ed, and she transferred me, she referred me to him, but I'm going to go back to her. And just talk to her really about what it is that we're doing, and why we need the money.
Has the Board of Ed seen the presentation?
They have, and I asked her if we can be on their agenda. And she again referred me. And so it's just going to be another conversation that needs to happen, I know Denise Minard is trying to get back going. But it's ideal, we want to get in front of the Board of Education, we want their. Sign on to this, we've spoken to the gentleman that puts this together. The presentation. The actual presentation is a little over an hour. But he said he would cut it down to about ten minutes so that we can fit it into the Board of Education agenda.
Is that the same person that was in that room?
That was in this room that we did?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, he's fantastic, and he really helped out, and he helped us with the financing. He kept us at the last year's budget. And he extended the opportunity. Come up with a deposit, we'll pay back. And however long it takes to get it going, we'll wait for the money.
So my question was basically what Alan asked. But as far as the three thousand dollars that you're asking for, besides the reporting secretary, is the deposit out of that three thousand dollars? Okay, so then the remaining three hundred is for the other items you were talking about, or do we have?
The other items are not as expensive, we have the Facebook, which is free.
Yeah.
Except for the licensing, and we don't plan on doing a lot of that. The Colors of the World, the crayons. They haven't come back to us with a cost, I don't believe that there's a cost to that, if it is, it's going to be minimal. But the bulk of our budget is going to be to the Witness Stone Project.
Okay, and do you have any ideas with what you want to do as far as fundraising?
Well, we. We are going to go around to every small business. We're going to go around, we're gonna. Fake sale, we're going to do. Anything that you can think of, we're going to do, because we're going to raise this money, we're all excited, this is something that's a long time coming, we've worked on it for a really long time. And we're not going to stop until it's done.
Okay, that concludes our presentations for tonight's. We do have public participation on the agenda, is there, same rules is typically applied. I'll first ask if there's anybody in the room who would like to address the members of the board, and then I'll turn to anybody who may still be with us online. Anybody here who would like to address the members of the Board of Select? Yes, ma'am, name and address.
Northern Farmer, two forty-seven Southwater Street, I actually came out because. All of my favorite groups were on your agenda tonight, and I wanted to talk. And talk about. It's exciting to see. It's exciting to see, it's exciting to go to the parks in the summertime and see with the music and the people, and the people in the flash and the art. And walking into the schools and seeing the stone gardens and. The things that they're working on with the schools, people are finally starting to kind of come out of the woodwork or COVID. And it's exciting to see officers and communities starting to welcome into doing things together that are positive and. And inspiring, the Witness Stone Project. I'll give you a check, and I'll. Talk to you about the school part of it, but that would be a phenomenal finish for us. And I just want you guys to be, if in any way you can. Give them at least what they're all asking for for these kinds of things, or if you can find a way to give them a little bit more. I'm all for it, because honestly, they're working their butts off. And they deserve to be able to do it with just maybe a little less stress of. Where am I going to get that extra two hundred bucks from, so. So give them everything they want, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, any other public comments from anybody here in the room? Is there anyone online who would like to address the members of Board of Select? Seeing none. Motion would be in order to adjourn.
No, that we adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, it's not debatable, all in favor of adjournment, please say aye. Opposed, we are adjourned at seven twenty-seven P M.